Okay, we're on the air and I'm going to call the meeting to order at this time. This is the September 16th, 2013 City Council meeting at 7:00 PM, 7:01 actually, at City Hall, 200 North Lake Street, Cadillac, Michigan. The meeting is called to order, wondered if and would request at this time that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a roll call. It's like Carrie tonight. Thanks for coming.
Councilmember Melama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spelman?
Stevens?
Here.
Burnett?
Here. Thank you, Carrie. First up is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions? I believe we do. Who would like to discuss those? Mr. Petya?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. There are two items that came in just after we put our agenda out. One item is under the, for the consent agenda, adding item C, a request from the Wexford County 4-H to hang a banner over Mitchell Street, where the second item is under Communications, looking at an item F, a request from the Oasis Family Resource Center to wrap several light posts along Mitchell Street in October for domestic abuse awareness.
Okay. Who would like to, are there any other additions, deletions? Nothing else? Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Would that be actually the entire agenda?
The consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. No, the agenda. Yes, you're right. I lied.
Okay. It's all right.
Support.
We're just warming up. We have a motion and support. We could approve the consent agenda too.
Not the whole agenda, just the...
We'll let you do that when we get there. Any, that's okay. Any discussion or comments about the agenda? Hearing none. Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion passes. Agenda is approved with slight amendments. Next up are public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Mr. Petya, we do have one item folks may be here to talk on tonight, which is the stop sign. Would we be letting them do that during that period or should they stand up at this point in the meeting?
Whatever your pleasure is.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
During the topics, finally.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna, with that in mind, the public comment is open. Anyone wishing to step forward at this time certainly may do so. Seeing no movement, we'll pass through a public comment and go to T.I.'s favorite, the consent agenda tonight. And there are two things on there. Council minutes from September 3rd, one from a regular meeting and one from a special meeting, and again, the new item for 4-H to hang a banner over Mitchell Street from the dates of October 7th through the 14th to celebrate national, excuse me, National 4-H Week. So with that...
I'm now jumping ahead to where I was. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's all right. You're in good company.
Support.
There's a support and a motion in reverse order. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Carrie, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion, Carrie. Next up are proclamations, which we have none for tonight. Public hearings would be next, and we do have one, which I'm going to open at this time. It is a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 2013-10, amending Article 2, Chapter 32 of the Cadillac City Code regarding refuse and recycling. Public hearing is open. I'm going to slide the staff first. Mr. Petya, would you like to kick this off or explain to everyone here, including counsel, what this is about?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the same ordinance that's been in front of council now several times over the last couple of months. At this public hearing, we are looking at finalizing a variety of what we've called sort of housekeeping type items. In the agenda packet, there is a document that summarizes all of the changes. The changes are going to be amending Section 32-19, 32-20, 32-21, 32-22, 32-24, 32-25, 32-27, 32-28, and 32, excuse me, 32, 33, 35, and I believe it ends with 36. I'm going to just go back and quickly give you a synopsis as best as I can with respect to what these major changes are. The changes have to deal with the storage bins. It provides for the opportunity for people to contact our vendor to receive a lid for their recycling bin. Also adjusts the containers with respect to scavengers. It allows for scavengers to come, pick up materials that are not within a container, but not to go outside of the container, excuse me, inside of the container to empty it out. It refers to how materials need to be bundled and accumulated. It refers to a collection schedule. There were changes where it provides for the city manager or my designee with respect to the management of the program, whereas before it simply identified the public works director. However, in practice, is there, for instance, it's actually work that's currently being managed by the utilities department. It essentially just cleans up a variety of language that was provided at our last council meeting for council to consider, and this is the final step in that process. I don't know if Jeff, if there's anything else you wanted to mention. There was also some cleanup to the language regarding the kind of mediums as well, that section two. Is there anything else that...
I think you hit them all pretty good.
The public hearing is open. If anyone would like to address this at this time regarding recycling, certainly may do so. It's also refuse and the amendment of Article 2, Chapter 32, ordinance number 2013-10. Mr. Maxwell, how are you tonight?
Good. How about yourself?
Good.
Gordy Maxwell, Northboro Art, Cadillac. I'm here again to oppose this mandatory recycling. You've yet to have any really good answers for us. Marcus just mentioned numerous changes, but I've yet to see them in writing. Probably most of you have not read them either, so before you think about adopting this, that should be prepared in writing for everybody to verify so that we're not working on somebody's opinion. I did notice at the last meeting, there was some discussion with Mr. Dietlin about fees that will be charged by the city of Cadillac to the customers, basically to do the bookkeeping for the company that's going to be profiting from the recycling. The company should be paying the city directly, not the customers, if they want to be in the business. Where else do you force something on the people, then charge them extra for the bookkeeping so the company can make more profits? We have recycling available. Again, I remind you, I now own about 30 parcels in the city that you are prohibited from approaching without paying me rent first for that recycling container. At the last meeting, we also noticed that a good portion of the city, well, this is a citywide ordinance, a good portion of the city is exempt from it. And we'd like to know the number of parties that are exempt. The condom associations, downtown businesses, Kirtland Terrace, Leeson Court, there's a great deal of businesses and residential housing in the city that appear to be exempt from this mandatory recycling. So when could you give me a breakdown of how many parcels are to be involved with this and how many parcels are exempt from it? A couple meetings ago, there was a discussion about this summary or audit that you had to determine if people liked it or not, and it basically was some email responses. But I propose that you send an invoice out to every parcel that you intend to provide recycling to and ask them to sign that agreeing to take the service. That way you'll have a much more clear factual summary instead of a hit and miss summary that you had. Basically, if the people want it, they'll sign a statement coming back to you that they agree to take the service and pay for it. But at this point, we learned quite a bit more at the last meeting. You don't really know how much the city, in a percentage or an exact number of customers, are exempt from this mandatory recycling while you're trying to force it on the rest of us. So let's get an accurate summary first. Send that letter out to everybody asking them who want it to sign up for it, see what your response is. You'll know how many that you sent out, you'll know how many that you received that say they dearly want this. Do we have any idea what the numbers are of how many customers there are in the city and how many would be exempt? Do we have any idea what that would be?
We do know how many residential customers we have. I'm not sure, Jeff, if you know how many commercial folks are out there. We don't, we don't service them.
We have about 33,000 residential.
3,300?
We have about 3,300, excuse me, yes. We have about 4,000 that would be businesses and others, but a lot of those are fire lines also. So, you know, that's a hard number to gauge. It'd be a lot smaller than the 700 that the math would do. It'd probably be more like 200 or 300 that would be the actual number that are the downtown businesses, the industrial areas, the condo associations. It'd probably be about 300 to 400 out of the 4,000 accounts.
That sounds pretty light. How many people are in Kirtland Terrace? How many families are in Leeson Court? How many families are in the condom associations? How many apartments are there above the buildings in downtown Cadillac? How many churches do you have in town? How many exempt customers are there? If you don't know these answers, then you're certainly not prepared to go forward with this. And there again, why would the customer be paying the city to do the bookkeeping for the contractor? Does that make any sense to you? Does anybody else do that? Ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. First of all, is it in writing, Mr. Petya? Gordy, maybe you don't want to go too quickly, but...
Yeah, he's got three minutes.
Well, it is in writing. It's in our packet tonight, and that was online.
Yeah, it's been provided in previous meetings as well.
Okay. These are the same parcels that get our trash pickup as well?
Yes.
And finally, the administrative fees, are they treated the same way as the trash pickup?
There is no administrative fee for recycling. The administrative fee that Mr. Maxwell's referring to, we talked about last time, was for the refuge bins, the big 96-gallon bins that people have for refuse, and for the trash. We do not have any administration fee for recycling. It was not bid out with any.
Okay. Public hearing is still open. Thanks. I just wanted to see if I could get him some answers there quickly. Anyone else wishing to talk about the adoption of ordinance number 2013-10, amending Article 2, Chapter 32 of the Cadillac City Code regarding refuse and recycling? Seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public hearing at this time and turn it over to council.
One of the questions I had, and by the way, it's probably good to clarify, right now we have an ordinance in effect, and Mr. Maxwell brought up some good points. We currently have an ordinance in effect, and there's some good change in this. If we don't approve it, that other one's still in there. And there are some really good changes, and so I'm glad that we looked at them, and really that's what we should have done the last time as well. But I still, on the Section 32-22, I'm still confused, I shouldn't say confused, but I understand it, but I'm not understanding the rationale of the first two sentences. We first talked to the contractor. It seems like we want, we making her provide, you know, the units or the containers. The first sentence is saying, hey, you gotta have a lid, and it has to be covered in it, but there's no reference to using those containers. And then now we're having it, which I think is a good thing of just having her provide them if needed. But they're really contradicting each other. The one is an optional if you want a lid, but we're seeing in the first sentence that it's, if you don't have a lid, you're against the ordinance. And so I was thinking, before we were looking at adding some language, number one, to mention the recyclable materials in the, the, excuse me, the container provided by the contractor. But if you read those two sentences, we're still in contradiction that they don't have to get a lid from the provider, but they're mandatory by the ordinance. Is the one main issue I still see. I do think there was some good changes made to this since the one that was approved last time that changes a lot of the contradictions, but that's still one area I am still questioning.
Okay. How would we like to clean that up? That does make a little of a sense that it is contradicting each other.
32-22, there's the one I...
The, Councilmember Stevens, members of council, I'm looking at the red line version of the ordinance that shows the change that was provided at our last meeting, and the way that it reads that I have here, it says, "All solid waste from recyclable material containers shall be leak proof, shall have tight-fitting covers, and shall be kept in a clean and sanitary condition by the owner." Then it goes on to say, "Covers for recyclable material containers shall be provided upon request by the provider of the containers." And then it goes into size capacity for the other, for the other containers, where it says, "Solid waste containers that are not provided by a commercial hauler shall be equipped with two handles or with one suitable handle for carrying enclenatic seat 50 gallons in capacity." I'm not sure, Mike, did that not make it into your resolution? Because I think that's perhaps where there's a discrepancy.
What you read, I think is, but if you're reading the first and second, first one's saying recyclable containers must have a tight-fitting cover. So I'm questioning, I thought it was determined that she wasn't necessarily having to provide everybody with one. And so the second sentence says, "If you want one, you can get one." So it just seems contradicting and could cause a lot of questions later. Does that mean if they use one of her containers, you don't have to have a cover? Or, you know, do we just put that it's, in the recyclable materials, there's no cover It seems if we're going to do it, that would be a good cleanup thing instead of having it contradicting. And so you're saying if...
Yeah, so we would say...
Solid waste containers shall have a leak proof, tight fitting, and that covers for recyclable materials. So if we just, if we just took out recyclable materials from the first sentence, and then say covers for recyclable material containers will be provided upon request, I think that would work. Oh, my gosh, I'm like pointing at my pencil on my computer.
Okay. Is there...
That would be...
Okay.
Is that some?
That's what you guys were debating it last time, but I don't know if that's the, if that's, that's what makes sense to me if you guys are concurring.
All right. Just take out the part in blue for us and what might be on the internet that indicates end recyclable material. Those three words.
That makes sense.
Okay. Anyone else have any other discussion on the ordinance?
I think this now looks a lot better. I know last time I didn't vote for it. Part of the reason was because of the wording. These changes make this a lot more solid, so I appreciate it. But yeah, it is, I think, to make it clear for Mr. Maxwell too, it's a case where the old one's in now. If we don't approve this, those changes aren't made, and there are some good changes here, at least to make it a better ordinance.
I just wanted to recognize Jeff, who's spent a lot of time working with the city attorney in trying to clean up and finding areas that needed, needed to have the dust brushed off, so. Thank you, Jeff.
Much appreciated, thanks.
Dust.
Dust.
All right.
Is dust recyclable?
I hope so. Anything else from our council? And if not, could we have...
I would like to, do you have anything, though? I'd like to make a motion if not to adopt ordinance number 2013-10, amending Article 2, Chapter 32 of the Cadillac City Code regarding refuse and recycling.
As amended?
As amended.
Is there support for councilmember Shippers' motion?
Support.
Any discussion further?
The only other quick question, certainly not in the ordinance, Marcus, but now that you are the designee deciding this, has the decision been made to have the recyclable collected the same day as somebody's trash?
Yes. Yes. And in fact, I'm going to be updating council a little bit later, but the designation portion within the ordinance is just referring to who I would have managing this part of our services, and that it's going to be, at least for the time being, the utilities department who does all the billing for our other utilities as well, including the refuse.
Anything else? Hearing, nothing else. Carrie?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, council and staff and the public for weighing in. Mr. Petya, who's doing communications tonight?
I'm going to run through them, and Carrie, it'll be teamwork if we need some help. We have a whole bunch of them today, but we also have folks, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that are here this evening to help, help address their individual items. But the first one is the Fall Fever Festival, and I do see Joy in the audience. I'm going to just briefly mention what, what the request and motion is going to be, and then certainly I would like to invite Joy Van Dree, if it's okay, to address city council, talk a little bit about the event that's coming up pretty soon. The request did come in for the East of the City Park on Friday, September 27th, at 5:00 through Sunday, September 29th, until 2:00 PM for the Fall Fever Festival. They are looking at putting in a 30-by-60-foot tent to accommodate the craft beer component of the, of the festival. We are going to need a motion with respect to a street closure on Harris Street between Lake Street and the parking lot for another component of the event, which is a car show, as well as to accommodate the vendors on September 28th, 2013, between 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM. And Joy, why don't you kind of come up and explain a little bit what's going to be different about the event this year? Because as I understand it, you're going to be using the triangle portion of the city park and the north-east side, I believe, off of Harris Street?
Right. The city fountain park area, it's a big rectangle, and we're going to use half of that. So basically, north of the fountain, we're going to be enclosing that in as our, that would be the craft beer festival portion of our, of our event. So within the, that area will be the craft beer tent, a live music tent. We have a home brew contest that's going to have a tented area, and then we'll have open seating in between so people can freely move around outside, not just be confined to underneath the tent. But it will be all secure. We actually have hired two security people that will be on site from 6:00 to 11:00. And then, so the, the actual event will go from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM. And so we have the classic car show that will be on Harris Street from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. So it's more of, I mean, it's family-friendly, but more geared towards adults than it has been in the past. And it is secured because last year we lost money on the event, so we really need the opportunity to be able to secure the ground so we can collect the $25 fee at the door, at the gate. So, but for those of you out there that want to partake in the event but don't like beer, but you still want to come down and enjoy the live music and everything else, you still will be able to, there's several different ways of being able to get in without paying the $25 fee. So...
There is a map in your packets as well that shows the layout of the new, of the new festival.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the city park on Friday, September 27th through the 29th for the Fall Fever Festival, and also to approve the street closure on Harris Street between Lake Street and the parking lots for the car show on the 28th between 1:00 and 7:00 PM.
Support.
Okay. There's a motion and support. Any other comments board, boardwise? Anything else we need to note?
25-plus flavors, the other thing I want to let people know, that it's Craft Beer Festival, but we do have two cider brewers that are going to be there, so we will have hard cider and some wine on, on site as well. So it's not just beer.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, council, any last comments?
I hear there's a marvelous band for dancing going to be there, isn't it, the Benzy Playboys?
Yes.
They do zydeco and Cajun music that is just knock your socks off, so come for that even if you don't feel like drinking beer.
And Samantha Crawford.
Oh, and Samantha, too. Nice.
Okay. Good job. With that, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good luck, Joy. Thanks for doing this again. Keep up the good work down there. All right. Mr. Petya?
Yes.
Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item, City Council actually previously approved, it's with respect to the Cadillac High School Homecoming Parade. The date, however, did change, and therefore we're asking the City Council to reapprove the event and the closures. Nothing else, to my knowledge, Carrie changed, just simply the date. And so the Homecoming Parade is scheduled now to be held on October 11th, 2013, at 5:00 PM. The parade setup is slated to start at 3:30 PM on Lake Street, and the parade route will begin on Lake Street to West Harris Street to Mitchell Street, north on Mitchell to Pine, west on Pine to Chestnut, ending on Linden Street at the high school. And so we're looking at a motion to approve the parade route on October 11th.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve the parade route for Cadillac High School Homecoming Parade on October 11th, 2013, at 5:00 PM.
Is there support?
Support.
Hearing the support as well. Any discussion? This is always a lively parade, a lot of good community spirit, school spirit. Anyone else? Going, gone. Carrie, could you give us a roll call again, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried again. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an item that has come before City Council, at least annually, since I've been here, and perhaps for even years before then. It's from the Zion Lutheran Church, who is looking at placing a couple of signs up, a couple of temporary off-permer sandwich board signs up in the city of Cadillac with respect to their Project Christmas program. The signs are, they're being asked to display the signs on October 17th to the end of the show on October 19th. Jerry Adams did a very good job, a very comprehensive job in putting together the communication, and has basically mentioned two things under the request for council action. The staff recommends the City Council approve the temporary signs as exempt under the regulatory standards of said section. 46-664 is subject to two following conditions, that one, the signs are placed within the right-of... right-of-way of a state trunk line, or, excuse me, signs placed within the right-of-way of a state trunk line located in the city of Cadillac shall comply with the permitting requirements and standards of MDOT. And, two, that the period of display shall be limited to October 17th, 2013, to October 19th, 2013. Jerry, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Are you sure? Those dates?
The council has approved a similar request for probably the last three, four, or five years, and they're compliant with the requirements of the ordinance.
Is there a date issue?
You were just saying October 17th through the 19th, but it looked like it was the 28th of October through November.
You're looking at the Nazarene one.
Okay. So it's my fault. Sorry about that.
There, yeah.
I think there's something missing.
Normally, it would be your fault.
Actually, it's just missing in the.
It's right here on your desk. I'm sorry. That was one that we sent out and had to print out. It missed the packet.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So a motion and support?
I will make a motion that we approve the off-premise signs request to be placed on October 17th through the 19th, for the craft show to be held on the October 19th. With the two recommended conditions that were set, given the displaying of the time from the 17th through the 19th, and that they must conform with all requirements of the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support as well?
Support.
Any discussion on these signs? Okay, hearing, anyone here from the Zion Lutheran Church tonight? Carrie?
Councilmember Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is basically identical to the one that was just considered and approved by city council. This time, it's from the First Church of the Nazarene, looking to have a temporary off-premise sign posted for their craft bazaar. The dates are October 28th through November 2nd. The two conditions are identical with respect to what was just approved as well. I'm not sure if there's any questions, or Jerry, if there's anything you wanted to add?
No, again, the council in the past has approved similar requests for the church, First Church of the Nazarene. The funds will be used for youth activities for not only members of the church, but the community at large.
Is there a reason that, I mean, this is maybe rhetorical, but if the sale is on November 1st, why does the sign still need to be up on the 2nd?
It's the 2nd also.
It's the 1st and the 2nd. Okay. Held on November 1st and 2nd.
It is good to know. Thank you.
Then I'll make a motion to approve a temporary off-premise sign to be placed on October 28th at the corner of East Cass and North Mitchell till November 2nd, 2013, for a craft bazaar and bake sale being held on November 1st and 2nd for the First Church of the Nazarene.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Did you wish to say anything? Are you Carol, by chance?
Yes.
Do you want to say anything tonight?
I'll just give you a little. Thanks for allowing me to come. The youth, four years ago, they needed funds to get to college in Kankakee, Illinois for competitions, and they have gone for years. And a lot of them couldn't go because they didn't have the money. Last year was just amazing. We had several vendors that are local that come in, and it is just skyrocketed. And they, it's nonprofit, so, you know, it's hard to publicize, so the signs do help, so.
Okay, thanks for coming tonight. So we have a motion and support. Any discussion based on that as well? Hearing none. Carrie, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good luck to you guys. Thanks for coming. Next, Mr. Petya or Carrie?
Want me to? Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a request from Sears/Little LLC to essentially have like an event in the back alleyway behind the store. So it would be off of Elka Avenue. We simply used a request for block party form and struck out block party and called it alley party, since we didn't quite have a form to fit the request. But nevertheless, it does, in our opinion, require the city council to close it down, since it is technically a street. I'm not sure if there's anybody here, if there is somebody here that could perhaps talk about the event, but the request would be to close the alley behind Sears on Saturday, October 5th, 2013, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for a grand reopening celebration.
Okay. Do you mind coming forward and giving us your name?
My name is Andrea Gallexon, and I am the store manager. We recently, in June, got new owners of the Sears store, and so Sears Corporate actually allows us a special sale and community promotion. And so we're asking for, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., to hold kind of a block party atmosphere with, we're hoping to get a bounce house or air slide. We're going to do a contest for a design hour ad with the local elementary students. We'll hang them in our front windows. We're also going to be picking a winner during that said block party. They'll receive some sort of pizza party or something for their class. We're just trying to draw the community in, to let them know that we are having a special sale, we are under new ownership. And we're also going to do hot dogs, probably potato chips, and soda, water, non-alcoholic refreshments. And then also, we're going to be giving away $250 Sears gift card, and 1079CDY is going to be coming to help us promote that from 11:00 to 1:00. So we'll have all sorts of fun stuff. Bring your friends.
You get to try out the new alley, too, don't you?
Yes.
Looks nice.
Don't break the alley.
Don't break it.
We haven't paid for it yet.
Well, anything, anybody have any questions for Andrea? Other than the blue crew? What's, you're part of the blue crew?
I am.
It's like the Blue Man Group, right?
Yeah.
But you never heard that before?
I haven't, actually.
Oh, wow.
It's a new one.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to vote this up, I believe, shortly. Could we have a motion, or is there any discussion necessary, other than to welcome the littles into the business world down on Main Street? Dennis and Trish are the new owners.
I'll make a motion that we approve the alley closure behind Sears' location on Saturday, October 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for their grand reopening celebration.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support for that?
Support.
And any discussion? Okay. Carrie, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good luck again, Andrea. Good to see you. Yep. All right, I think we're down to.
The added item?
Yes. I can see that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this next item was added earlier this evening. It's a request from the Oasis Family Resource Center to approve the wrapping of approximately a dozen lampposts on Mitchell Street with purple and clear-colored lights during the month of October, to raise awareness of domestic abuse. They're also asking to hang ribbons on a tree in the city park to represent the number of domestic violence victims. I do believe Sally Repack is here, if there's any questions about the event.
Come on up, Sally, if you would. I know you had a T-shirt gig last year that was very successful.
Yes, it was. Mr. Mayor and members of council and city manager, thank you for your time, and thank you for adding it in. As you are aware, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and our goal is to raise awareness of domestic violence and sexual assault in the community. So last year, we tried the T-shirts, and we didn't factor well enough in the weather. And they got a little worn by the end of the month, and so we decided that that probably wasn't a good representation that we wanted. So we're looking at wrapping some of the lights in front of our building, just in purple, which is the color of domestic violence movement. We are also requesting that one tree in the park that we would put ribbons, and we have about 564 last year victims in Wexford County. And we would put that, the number of victims, on the tree and take responsibility, obviously, for putting them on and taking them off. And then the other thing that the committee recommended is that we write sayings in chalk in front of our building on Main Street. And obviously, those sayings would be professional and kid-friendly, things like "Be nice to other people." People learn how to treat you based on what you accept from them. And we would be happy to submit those slogans and anything else to the commission for your approval.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Repack tonight?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the letter, it says sidewalk chalk in the area in front of the pavilion. Is that where you wanted to have it? Or do you want to have it in front of your office? Or both?
Well, I will go with both. Thank you for that correction.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions, comments, compliments?
I just was going to mention, we should add that to our motion with respect to the sidewalk chalk.
Sidewalk and pavilion chalk.
Lamp posts.
You're having your vigil again this year?
Yes, we will, except that we're probably looking at doing it as a candlelight walk from our office, and we are still organizing that. We'll be sharing that information with the members of the commission when we get it.
Thank you. Just thought I'd take care of that while we're scribbling over here. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion to approve the wrapping of lampposts on Mitchell Street with lights to raise awareness of domestic abuse and sexual violence in our community, and approve hanging of ribbons on a tree in the city park to represent the number of domestic violence victims, and also to allow domestic violence slogans that would be appropriate for all ages on the sidewalk in front of Oasis and on the sidewalk in front of the pavilion in the city park.
Good. I think that covered it. Thank you. Is there support for councilmember Shippers' motion?
Support.
Thank you. Councilmember Melama is being quiet over there tonight. Any other discussion?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight, Sally. And any discussion from council? Hearing none. Carrie, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Again, good luck, Sally. Thanks for doing this. Next, it looks like we have appointments. Mr. Petya? It's one of my favorite.
Mr. Mayor, Carrie, you think you might?
We have a reappointment to the Cadillac Planning Commission. Kevin Fent has served on the Planning Commission since 2001. He's looking to be reappointed for a three-year term, expiring on 1/10/16.
Thank you. Carrie, this is Kevin, who served, actually, T.I. and I have both served with him, have enjoyed his company and his insight.
Excellent member of that commission, I would say.
Yes.
It's a long time. 2001. Mr. Dolek knows how the time is commitments for those types of committees. That's a big commitment for the planning board as well. And usually, you don't have people coming to thank you. It's usually the opposite way. So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Kevin Fent to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending on October 1st, 2016.
And I'll support that and thank him at this time.
All right. We'll thank him in advance. Thank you, Kevin. He is not here tonight. So with that, there's a motion and support. Any other discussion about Kevin, his work on the Planning Commission? Hearing nothing else, but good things. Carrie, could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, under appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we are looking for the affirmation and the appointment, of the appointment of Sandra Wasson as the new city clerk for the city of Cadillac. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time again, for being able to come in and help Owen, myself, and Linda conduct various interviews. Sandra is the individual that we did select for appointment this evening. She has a tremendous amount of experience, especially in the manufacturing field, but does have a passion for public service, has completed a master's of public administration degree back in August of 2011, and we think will bring a great deal of quality, professional experience to this position. Sandra, and I believe her family, are here this evening, and at this time, it would be appropriate for consideration, and then for our treasurer/deputy clerk to swear Sandra in.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Petya, for, first of all, the invitation to sit in through the second round of interviews, I believe it was. It was a pleasure to meet Sandra, as well as the other two folks that we did interview that were also of similar high quality. So I'm pleased to have met Sandra and hear what she has to offer, and it sounds like it's a very positive bill of goods, and we're looking forward to having her onboard. I just enjoyed the opportunity to be invited, to be part of the interview team, and it was a good experience. I believe we have picked the most qualified person that will fit in with our city, represent our city, and certainly has the passion that we would like every city employee to have, which we're lucky to have, those that we do, because they do represent and are very similar to how Sandra approaches city government. She's got a real passion, and I think you'll see that right away. So with that, I believe we do need to do a vote here, because we're going to approve the recommendation, and I assume this is a recommendation from the city manager.
Yes.
And I guess the date, she's going to start pretty soon, but not this week yet. They still need her where she's coming from, because she's valuable there, and I think there are a few people in tears over there, because she's going to be missed. So with that, though, she's about a week from now or so.
About a week from now.
Okay. So she's not going to take over duties tonight. But at first, I would assume that we're going to pass her, and I'd ask that we have a motion at this time and a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to, is it to appoint or to approve?
It would be to approve the appointment.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Sandra Wasson to the position of Cadillac City Clerk.
Support.
There's a motion and support. Anybody have anything else to say?
I would just mention, I know I brought this up the last time, actually, but for Sandra and the public, this one's a little unique. We don't hire every employee, excuse me, the council doesn't appoint every employee. There's just certain ones, and that's through the charter. And you have some special responsibilities. I think that it's a checks and balance for the staff and the council, because you're going to be taking an oath, and you have to follow certain guidelines as a clerk. And I think that's that special thing to understand. We know that ethics are important, and you have to have that security, that you have a special authority over staff and council if the ethics are not there. Sometimes people might violate in terms of election law, or you may be, hopefully, that would never happen, but persuaded by someone. So you have that special authority to not have to worry about losing a job over that, and that's the role for both. So your recommendation was high. We're looking forward to having you work here and to know that mistakes are going to be made. Don't ever worry about that. It's a position like this in the public, people know you're going to make mistakes. But it's just keeping the ethical integrity of the process that's more important to them. Thank you.
Anyone else with a discussion point at this time? Hearing none. We do have a motion and support. And I guess we could go forward at this time. Thanks for doing so, council. Carrie.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shipper's?
Yes.
Spelman? Mayor Burnett?
Yes. For zip, that would be approval. Sandra, I'm going to ask you, if you wouldn't mind, to come up and over in this general area. Are we going to proceed with the swearing in at this time? Would that be appropriate? Watch that wire. I don't know if we've got the mat fixed yet.
We did, but it's fragile.
Sure.
Okay. How about get a good side view for Mr. Charmley? Let him get into position. He's getting his extra lens.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk according to the best of my ability.
Sandra. Did you want to address us briefly tonight? Address us down, either way?
I want to thank all of you for this opportunity. I'm very excited and very honored to be given this opportunity, and I certainly look forward to learning everything I need to know and to the challenges that I'm going to face. And I thank you in advance for your patience and support. I'm sure I'll need that. And my goal is to serve the position well and serve the community well. And I just thank you again.
All right. You're very welcome. Thanks again. Congratulations to you and to your family. Thanks for coming tonight as well. Okay, Mr. Petcha, city manager's report is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Rita Meach is here. She's in the back of the room. Although most of you know Rita through her company, Miss Green LLC, the company also that's going to be doing the recycling services, residential recycling services for the city. And actually, meeting with Rita over time last week to talk about recycling, she mentioned that she has some information about the sculpture that sits on the west side of City Hall off of Lake Street, sort of nestled in between the access doors by where the utility offices are and the fire station, the fire garage. Rita actually provided, and it's in your packet, it's a copy of a program, and I apologize if it didn't print very well, from 1978, from October of 1978, when the city took possession of the sculpture. And Rita, I'm not sure if you wanted to step forward and just mention a couple of things about it?
I don't know if you noticed in the paper, the Ask Rover column a little over a week ago had, someone wrote in and was wondering, you know, wondered about the sculpture and also said that, you know, you couldn't really see it from the road anymore because of the vegetation. Well, I guess it was the building authority they contacted. And I was kind of appalled, really, that they didn't know anything about the sculpture. I mean, they didn't have the name right. They didn't know the artist. They thought it was a student. I mean, it was, so I'm coming here requesting that maybe what the city should do to, you know, for your own investment, I mean, this is a valuable piece of art that is done by a nationally recognized artist that's in the Smithsonian Institute. And, you know, I think we need to, when people of the generation that, you know, procured it or helped procure it pass away, that, you know, we have some record that isn't just buried maybe in the files, but I was thinking maybe a plaque on the wall, I mean, something to secure your investment. I mean, that you don't know that this is a famous, world-famous artist, or nationally famous, I should say. I mean, it's kind of, you know, it could be lost. So that's what I would like to see, some kind of city plaque or, you know, or even just redoing that dedication ceremony is what I sent Marcus, even doing that and framing it, you know, so that there's some record that's easily found. And you'll have that for posterity, just like the Shea locomotive, you know. So and then I also wanted to say, this could be, you know, there is, I thought it was interesting, because I felt that the sculpture needed to be moved for a long time, because the vegetation has grown around it. And besides that, the sculptor, when we dedicated, he didn't want it that close to the building. He felt it needed to be further from the building. But the building authority at the time was afraid, you know, I mean, they were just, they just denied the request. And so they wanted it where it is now. But, I mean, the artist didn't. And he seemed to recognize the fact it was not going to be behooved, you know, the visual viewing of it. So, I mean, I would like to see, you know, you consider at least moving it, moving it. I mean, I looked when I went by today, I mean, I don't know how you could prune the trees up. I mean, you'd hurt the trees, really. I mean, the beauty of the trees, the symmetry of the trees, I think if you tried to just cut the vegetation. So, I mean, maybe it's something to really think about. And I bring up Joyce Pritikovich, because she's been working on looking into something that is happening in other cities in Michigan with these sculpture projects. And maybe it could be the start of a larger sculpture project for the city. I know, everyone knows how much the library sculptures, bringing in the Seward sculptures, people really enjoy it. And I think people really do enjoy visual art in their communities. So I want you to think about moving it and maybe starting, having that as an impetus for something, you know, bigger going on. And Joyce has some information that she wants to share.
Hi, Joyce. How are you tonight?
Hi. Well, first of all, my proposal comes from an idea that was, that is being done in Chelsea, Michigan, and in Novi, Michigan. And my husband, who's a sculptor, has been part of each of these programs. And what it involves is inviting 10 sculptural artists to submit an idea or sculpture image to committee. Actually, it would be more than 10 submissions, probably, but we would pick 10 to display in the city area for either a period of the summer, or it could be for a whole year. Chelsea does a whole year. And the idea would be to partner with the city, the Cadillac Foundation, the Friends of the Library, and the Cadillac Area Artists Association, and maybe Padnouse, who has also expressed an interest in having outdoor sculpture in the community. So the way Chelsea does it is, as I said, they invite sculptors to submit images. Then they choose 10. And they have made 10 permanent cement pads in their community. Those 10 pads get filled up with different sculptures each year. The artists are paid a stipend of $300, and that is to cover the expense of bringing the sculpture, installing it, and then removing it when the time period is up. They also have a prize they offer as an incentive to get sculptors to submit, and that prize they have at $600. So each of the 10 artists get an opportunity to win that prize. Prize would be awarded based on people's choice, and then maybe the committee would get one vote to go along with that. So the overall cost I saw for the first year to start a program like this would be about $4,000. And that would include the cost of putting in the slabs. That would probably involve some payment of city laborers, so. But so that cost would include probably the cement and the installation by city laborers. And then, so, you know, I hate to see an opportunity get missed here. We've had two years with Seward Johnson sculptures coming into the city. Every time I go by one of those sculptures, I see people with cameras posing with them. These may, you know, I think he's shown us all he's got now. I mean, we've had his two selections, and I don't think there are any more for the Friends of the Library to get in the future. So I'm proposing this to keep the whole idea going. I hate to see an opportunity leave, because I think maybe we could become known for this. It would bring people in to see it, as I'm sure people did come in to see the Seward Johnson pieces. So I'm proposing this to you now to think about. I would need approval from the city before I could approach anyone else who might be contributing financially to this, to get approval for the placement of the pads, just for the whole idea. I think this has got to be led by the city, and then the other organizations would be brought in to help cover the expense. So this is my idea, which I've taken from these other communities, and it seems to work. My husband has done, he's, I think he had three years, he's been submitting sculptures to Chelsea and two years to Novi. And each year, it's a joy to go install them and to see how nice they look in the community. So I'm going to give you each copies and hope that you will consider this.
Okay. Do you mind coming around the other way there? Thank you. Good job, Joyce. Thank you for sharing that. While we get the handout, Mr. Petcha, any thoughts from staff before we do something maybe tonight or as far as?
I think, I would suggest that council not take any formal action tonight regarding this program. I can offer, I did have a conversation with the representative from Padnouse earlier this summer, who had actually mentioned, Joyce, where'd you go? The, a program almost identical to what you were referring to and how their company has been involved in other communities in making that kind of thing happen. We had a preliminary meeting, and he had mentioned that he was going to perhaps look at meeting with like the DDA and the library, Friends of the Library, and just trying to create some synergy between various groups. Wasn't quite sure if Padnouse actually wanted to spearhead it or not, but at least it sounded like that they were looking at taking some steps ahead. But it's great to have this information down on paper. And what I can do with this is try to sort of circle the wagons again and see where the interest is at. And assuming that there would be some interest in a program that we can put together, make a recommendation at a later point in time.
Good.
Okay.
And perhaps if, you know, if Padnouse wasn't interested in spearheading it, participate, and maybe Joyce could get a committee together or something.
All right. Thank you, Rita. And Joyce, looks like Terry was on the original committee way back when. Mr. Os, so still going at it. It's wonderful. Oh, and Mr. Petcha, does that complete the City Hall sculpture and the?
Yes.
Additional idea regarding sculptures?
Yes. The next item, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, is just a brief recycling program update. Last week, I had the opportunity, along with Rita and Jeff Deetland from Utilities, our director, to videotape a public service announcement. I think it went about a half hour long. I didn't really know what I was doing, but we winged it and provided what I think was some really good information about the upcoming program. I wanted to just take like a minute right now just to explain what people are going to be seeing in the next week or so. First of all, what I'm holding up here is a copy of the brochure that's going to be placed in all of the utility bills that people are going to start seeing. Jeff, when do the bills go out?
This week, probably midweek.
Okay. This brochure includes information such as what materials are accepted. It lists them out pretty easy to read, just simply bulleted. But most importantly, it provides two critical things. The phone number to call should there be any questions regarding the program. That number is 942-9444. But it also includes the 2013, 2014 recycling schedule. The recycling, the recyclable materials will be picked up on the regular day of your pickup day, but not every week, every other week, because it's a bi-weekly program. And so if you look at the back of the brochure, it'll list, you know, if you're a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or Friday pickup, you would look under that date, and then you would simply look for the month, and it'll give you the dates in which the recyclables will get picked up. If there are any questions regarding billing, you would contact the city as you would normally regarding any billing inquiries or questions. The number would be 231-775-0181, extension 123. Likewise, again, if there's any questions about the program itself, 942-9444 would be the number to call. Bins are going to be dropped off starting the week of the 23rd, so starting next week in anticipation of the start of the program, which will be the week of October 1. So that's my update.
Okay. Thank you very much. Looks like we have a memo of understanding we're going to look at next. Marcus, what's that all about?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. I just need to pull it up here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a program that Jerry Adams and Bruce DeWitt worked on very hard, along with Linda Kimball and several others. The program is a North Boulevard Connector Trail project. There is a nice diagram in your packets that show the connection of the project. I'm just going to summarize what we're being asked to do today. There is a memorandum of understanding from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources that we're being asked, where there were, excuse me, that I'm asking for authorization to approve by council. The cost of this work will be reimbursed to the city. This is going to widen essentially the path and improve the safety of the existing six-foot trail from the state park to Kenwood Park, which is on the north side of North Boulevard. The grant was written and awarded to the Parks and Recreation Division of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, and it's about 200, I want to say about $203,000, $204,000. I think in the packet, we just generalized it as $200,000. Both Jerry and Bruce are here if there's any questions about the project in specificity. But we are asking for the city council to authorize the mayor, city clerk, and I believe myself, to sign off on the grant documentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Petcha.
I guess it's a much-needed improvement. It'll be a good, excuse me, a good thing.
Is there a motion to support this project?
I'll make the motion to approve memorandum of understanding and authorize the mayor, clerk, and city manager to sign the grant agreement.
Okay. Is there any big rush in this, Marcus, to sign it with regard to Ms. Wasson?
You know, are you aware of a date issue?
No, it's not real pressing.
Okay. All right.
Support.
Okay. There's a motion and support. Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Anything else other than this is a good example of the public working with the government, the private, well, public, actually, general public. So it's been going on for a while here, and I'm glad to see it come to fruition and staff approving it. So thanks, Jerry, for working hard on this, and anyone else who helped you. With that, anything else? If not, Carrie, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shipper's?
Yes.
Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried again, 4-0. Looks like the museum's up next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As some of you know, the city Cadillac Street Department representatives, along with Wexford County Historical Museum representatives, and actually a council member or two have met out on. out on site at the Wexford County Historical Museum to look at drainage-related issues that are affecting their building primarily, or I shouldn't say primarily, but partly due to the condition of the alley located north of the building. In the communication, Bruce DeWitt, our City Engineer and Public Works Director, identifies two primary issues. One is the stormwater from the gravel alley flowing towards the window wells and two that there's a lot of, basically a lot of water from the roof also impacting the window wells and there is not a functioning gutter system. In fact, Bruce, is there a gutter system at all in that vicinity? No? Okay, so there's no gutter system at all. The recommendation from the City Engineer and Public Works Director would be essentially to pave the alley and direct the water away from the building. In addition, putting a small concrete cap on the existing window wells would also be very helpful. There is a wooden sort of structure that the museum folks do place on there, but it's just certainly not adequate enough. For just a brief background as well, the facility is a city-owned building that is being leased out to the Wexford County Historical Society and they have done an absolutely tremendous job in renovating the facility and their renovations are continuing to happen. In fact, I believe they've already put in over a quarter of a million dollars into the structure. This is something that I would advise that we do move forward on with respect to paving the alley. We believe the project might be around $10,000. We are looking at possibly getting it started yet this fall. We're not entirely sure where the bid's going to come in and whether or not weather will play an issue, but we are looking for simply a motion from council this evening to approve moving forward with the bidding of the Wexford County Historical Society Museum Alley Replacement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Petya. I know Bruce is here. Bruce, do you want to, would you mind coming forward and telling us a little bit about this from your side, from the museum board's side of this?
Not sure how much more I can add, but he's certainly covered a lot of turf in a short amount of time, so we appreciate this opportunity to work with the city and, you know, as a member of the building committee, you know, we're looking at continued restoration on the building. We spent, as Marcus had mentioned, over 25, or $225,000 up to this point, over the past nine years approximately. And even so, we're looking at continuing that with an additional work doing on the structure on the outside and on actually the same side that the alleyway is going to be worked on as well. So we're looking, we're looking to resolve this. We know that, you know, apparently from the viewpoint and some of the information that was exchanged at our meeting, that at one time the alley was concrete surface and perhaps lower, we can't tell, but obviously if we're able to lower that grade on that alleyway, that would help divert the water. As mentioned, the alleyway contributes to that water coming towards the building. There is some roof runoff that occurs as well. But as we looked at, as you have in your packets, a picture, a photo of the water sitting in one window well, that particular well is one that where the alley surface sits above the well grade and so it acted as a drain. Where the other, when we looked at that night when we were getting a pretty heavy rainstorm, none of the other window wells were showing that kind of water residues setting in, so that was a lot of contribution coming from the alley surface. So we appreciate the fact that the city's, you know, has taken initiative to come in and look at that and has offered to, you know, correct that problem, so we appreciate that opportunity. And again, the restoration, by diverting the water so that it doesn't flow towards the building, it flows out towards the alleyway down to the street and follows the gutter down will help preserve that foundation of the building for years to come and will allow us to continue on the restoration of that area of the basement as well. So that's what I have up to this point. So any questions that I, that you might have?
I had an opportunity to visit and take a look at the alley and the wells and I'm wondering, you know, because we're moving rapidly towards fall and winter, I would like to do some preventive things before the snow comes. And I guess my question is to Bruce too, Bruce DeWitt, is maybe one of the first things we could do is address the wells and raise those and maybe just take the crown off the top of the alley, just so that the crown is not there. Do you follow what I mean? I'm not an engineer, but I see you doing this, so I must be communicating correctly. I'm just worried that we have some things in the basement that are not replaceable. I mean, pure and simple, I haven't been in the museum in a long time and I was impressed, but there's some things in there that we could never replace. They're part of our heritage and history and I really think we need to take a look at the calendar and move as quickly as possible.
I would agree and Mr. Welliver, thank you. I know you have some members of your committee here as well and thank them for coming because the one, the first thing I saw when you brought this to my attention is we can spend the $10,000 now and solve it or wait five, eight years and have to spend three or four times that amount to do the repairs of the damage. So this makes a lot of sense and council, I don't think, I was going to maybe mention, I know it'll be after the fact, but if Mr. Petya could send the letter, the email, you know, so everybody can see those pictures as well that they had sent to the council. I don't think you ended up forwarding it to us, but that kind of lays it out there. And then also, this would be coming, one of the suggestions I have is the Capital Projects Trust Fund, which is a permanent fund, so it's not affecting our general fund dollars and it's not going to stop something from going on. This is a fund purposely set there for the interest for things like this and it makes complete sense since this is a city building that we would use that, you know, and get taken care of, as you said, right away versus waiting and having it general fund. Nothing else would be cut or affected by using that fund versus a general fund too.
Okay. There was a letter then. I know you were going to send us pictures. I don't know if the whole council has seen the, I was with Mr. Malama the day that staff met and did a good job going through the issue with their board. Are the pictures available for Art and Ms. Shipper's to see?
Oh, they saw, I did see them. I'm sorry. And I actually told, I apologized. I told Bruce that I would forward the email and I didn't get a chance to, that you sent on the pictures, so.
Bruce, the committee is going to work towards that gutter because that's the third problem, is that you need to remove the water coming off that backside.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a combination of problems there, alley, well, and then the roof.
One of the things that we were looking at too, and this was, we're still in discussion points, so nothing's been finalized, but looking at some, number one, a protective cover to go over those wells since they are deep and fall protection type of concern. And the other was combining that with something that would prevent the water when it's dripping off the roof to deflect and of course go on the ground. And again, you know, part of the idea long-term would be to putting up, restoring, either restoring the gutter system that's in there or putting up another gutter system on the roof that would help channel that water in the right direction versus just, you know, coming on the ground.
Even just on that one side would be a great help.
Yeah.
Have you made contact with the CorTech Center on making covers?
Not at this point, but it's Darren Kearns, correct?
Yes.
And so I am familiar with at least some of their projects and stuff, so we are going to look into that as an opportunity for them to make something for us and we're looking forward to that, so.
I would, well, and thanks to Mr. DeWitt too for taking the time. I know you and Dan went out there and with your professional, skilled solutions solving, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request in moving forward with the bidding of the Wexford County Historical Society Museum Alley Replacement Project.
Okay, there's a motion on the table and there's support. Any discussion and would that be coming from that fund or is that going to be through staffs?
We'll provide the recommendation on the fund. It'll likely come from that fund, but it could also perhaps come from our local street fund. Is that right, Owen?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. We have a motion in support. Any further discussion? Did you happen to locate those pictures, so Ms. Shipper's?
Yeah, I'll be able to forward them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Carrie, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Shipper's?
Yes.
Bowman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Bruce, thanks for coming tonight and your other members that have come as well and that have worked so hard on our historical museum. Thanks for both of you coming back there. We got the backseat tonight, as well as Richard. Thanks. You got the gala coming up? You want to do a little spotlight on that or?
It's outside my turf, so.
Anybody wish to talk about that?
Love to, if you have.
Rob, why don't you come on up? We're going to do an impromptu community spotlight.
I've done this before. Bob Grossick, Eli, I'm on 200 East Mason. So thank you very much again for all the support the council's given the Historical Society, really appreciate it. I think it's a beautiful building and really, really just a good reflection of our community as a whole. October 12th, correct? Keep getting my dates mixed up. I've got a lot of October, Saturday dates, but October 12th is our annual gala. That is our largest fundraiser of the year. Very nice time. It's going to be the museum in all its glory decorated up and there'll also be kind of a couple of events that'll accompany it. There's a pre-party prior and then an after-party after the event as well. So very good time we have by all. The theme this year is going to be more of a masquerade-type ball, so kind of a good opportunity to, I don't see myself here, I don't get dressed up a whole lot in Cadillac anymore, so it's kind of a neat opportunity to get kind of all dressed up and kind of get out of the town and have a nice time. But pointing contacts, there are going to be anybody on the board. Tickets will be available at the museum, but as always, Doug Brown and Tom Taylor are always kind of the focal points of this event and they'll always have tickets and the specific information and everything. And we're going to try to get it in the paper as well. But again, thank you very much, really appreciate everyone's help and appreciate your time tonight.
Do you want to introduce your fellow board members that haven't been introduced?
Certainly. Richard Harvey?
Okay, he's got tickets?
Mitch Whitaker.
All right, Mitch has here as well. They all have tickets?
Uh, nobody has them on them right now, but we will. But if you ever have any problems, just call the museum and we'll be able to get you tickets from there or, yeah, hunt down one of us. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Rob. Okay.
Next?
Next is for discussion purposes tonight, initial discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Petya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is just an initial discussion regarding a four-way stop sign on the corner of Carmel and Stimson Streets. It's been discussed actually on a couple of different occasions about perhaps the need to look at putting a four-way stop sign in at that location. Again, Carmel and Stimson Streets currently, there are only, it's only a two-way stop. At the last City Council meeting, it was suggested that perhaps we do sort of a quick survey of the area to see where, to see where people might be at with respect to this item. There were, according to Bruce DeWitt, City Engineer, who actually did send the survey out, approximately 151 survey letters sent. The copy of the letter is in the council packet for reference. And important to note is that we did not ask people to respond to us if, essentially if they were okay with the creation of a four-way stop or indifferent. We only asked people to essentially RSVP, if you will, or to get back to us if they had any concerns about it. There were, so far, 14 responses received in total. Thirteen of them were not in favor of it. One person actually called to say that they were. So essentially at this point, there's 137 households that either concur with putting the extra two-stop signs out or are indifferent. And this is not necessarily unique, similar to when we do special assessments. You only ask for people to protest. You don't, the burden of asking people to come forward to say that they want it is not how essentially things are managed. Additionally, and Bruce might be able to add the actual number, but I know that we went out far and beyond that what you would normally go out if this was like a zoning-related issue, just as comparison. We tried to kind of do a nice swath of the area, knowing that this could have an impact on folks, not just necessarily right in that general vicinity. So we basically went out about three blocks in every direction. So again, at this point, basically we have 137 folks that have not contacted us, which is fine, that's what the instruction said, 14 folks that did with 13 saying that they didn't think it was a good idea. We have a couple of different options. We can make it a four-way stop tonight, if council so desired. We can take, we don't have to take any action. We can also, you know, say that we're going to continue to solicit, you know, feedback and input from neighbors who perhaps just didn't have a chance. So there's really, there's nothing on the staff's end saying, you know, City Council, please make a decision right now. Really it's up to councils to how you'd like to move with this, so.
Okay. I just would say that I've had two residents over the last five years on a fairly, or six actually, on a regular basis bring it to my attention that the traffic is, needs some work there. And I've sent Matt Wolfisle over there, or at least he made phone calls, one of the two, both to Mr. Ream and another citizen in the 300 block of Carmel here tonight. But I've been consistently hearing this, at least from two homes. We just received news that they may quadruple the size of the Sheriff Department on the same road. I'm hopeful that it shows up at a different location myself, but we're looking at our invitation at this point anyway. And I'm not sure where the city is in that, but it might be, theoretically it could be that our city would end up there. Didn't sound like we could afford it and that the east side of the city would be not a good place to put our police and/or fire department. In any event, we did at the beginning of the meeting indicate that we would allow people to speak at this time if they did come down and we did recognize in our letter that there was a meeting tonight. We did put it on the agenda. I don't expect a decision tonight. I didn't expect it. I just was hoping that we could have a discussion and I appreciate the survey that was sent out, which basically is 137 to 13 for a four-way if it's looked at light most favorable to putting a safety step in there. But there have been two citizens that have been, or two homeowners that have made consistent requests to have something done. We did have the police go in there. Our staff has looked at it and it's gotten worse and apparently there is an opportunity for a possible expansion, which would make it even harder for the neighborhood to withstand the traffic. It is hard to get out of their driveways, I've heard that. I know the last accident at the intersection was in 2010. There have been a lot of close ones and I'm going to guess the engineering doesn't require one, but the neighbors are people and they're seeing things and they've been talking to us for a long time. I think Ms. Powers is here or who would like to, does anyone want to speak tonight? Would you mind coming up, Sharon, and introducing yourself and thank you for coming?
Hi, my name is Jan Byrne. I live on Stimson Street.
All right.
I've been a resident there for 38 years at the same address. I have never found that traffic is heavy on Stimson. I don't know of any areas in that section where it's been overly. I don't know of any areas in that section where it's been overly unfunctional for getting out of, off of Stimson onto Carmel Street. I know that that road is used for ambulance and the police. I think stopping them at that section is a little redundant, since two blocks up, they have to stop again. And I also find that it's a school area, so if more signage that it's a school area might drop people from going fast through there or putting up more signs stating the traffic miles per hour is 25 or less might help, because I don't believe there is one through there. But generally, if something is looked at as slowing down traffic, maybe something could be put at Everett and that would be down further to the south. So that would slow it at the other end of the school and not two blocks from another stop sign. And that's all I thought. I could come and give my view.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry I misidentified you tonight. We actually did get, I haven't read any of the letters that we received. I don't know. I think it would make sense that we do just share that at some point with our council and maybe even the public without getting people's names out there. There always is a wonder if the survey is accurate with the...
I think it came on Thursday, Monday week.
Yeah? Okay.
So we didn't really have time.
Yeah, I think we got it on Monday or maybe Tuesday. I think the mail's been overloaded lately. So thank you for coming. Anyone else that would wish to talk about the Carmel Street issues? And I'm sorry. And what we did have, Marcus, is 137 to 13 as far as folks that have not responded versus folks that don't, don't want it.
Correct.
And we assume the ones that didn't respond, as the letter indicated, that they had no problem, or?
Or were indifferent.
Okay. I would like to review what the letters were that came in, at least the substance of them, and continue looking at this. There were some good suggestions. Some of the letters actually asked questions. I know that I did hear some feedback about 115 and other traffic matters throughout our city, which was nice to hear. There were some ideas about flashing lights and/or a school zone. Did we happen to hear from the school? That Franklin School, which is an entire block between Stimson and Everett?
I don't believe so.
So would we assume that they would like that, or is there a...
We would probably need to reach out to the schools directly. We just sent the letters to the, to the households, to the residents.
Was there a deadline? Okay. Was there a deadline on return?
No, it was just as soon as possible. And then we listed today's day as, today's council meeting is a meeting in which we were going to have this up for discussion.
Okay. And there were a lot of recommendations short of a traffic switch. Years ago, it used to be Stimson was the straightaway with the stop signs were totally reversed. Carmel was a dirt road for the 60s and part of the 70s. So it has transformed quite a bit with MedArts and mental health and the health department, all the stuff that's down there, especially in the morning hours when kids are cutting across different corners for school. And that is part of our safe routes for schools. I just wanted to have a discussion on behalf of the two homeowners that have asked me over years, and that with keeping in mind the expansion at the jail, which looks like that's where it's going to be, could make it even rougher.
Was there some suggestions on what people had sent in besides a four-way stop?
I believe there were some signage.
I'd like to see those too, and I think that school sign is an excellent idea. And I don't know, there, are there quite a few speed limit signs there, or are they lacking? Okay, well, there's, there's one. There's two suggestions. And then I'd like to see the other ones, because, okay, and then revisit that.
Tonight, just the initial discussion, maybe would have died, but I appreciate you coming again. And the folks that did respond and...
Just wanted to offer, for, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Maybe another, another triggering effect in this process could be when the county does decide if, if and when they're going to be rebuilding or doing, you know, changes to their facility, because you mentioned that that could, you know, increase the traffic impact and so forth possibly. So that could be another factor to consider.
Right. It is, the folks that live on Carmel, one of them wanted their taxes lowered because they felt their value of their home had gone down. They were that serious about the issue. So I thought this might be a good time, and they were pleased to hear we were discussing it. So I would like to, we need a motion, Marcus, to continue looking at it and looking at alternatives as well, or just allow staff to keep working. Mr. Stevens, I think I cut you off.
About three people have cut you off, so I'll join the crowd. No, I was wanting to mention, unrelated to this, I know I've been talking for a while about that safe routes to school, and there's been a lot of discussion with that being a school district right there. And I'm wondering if anything we do, if we could tie that in and have that be part of the decision-making, is, is, how does it all fit in with the safe school routes? There has been for years a lot of talks about that being right there. And I know, I think even in maybe our last meeting or two, I actually requested again if maybe we got in to contact with the schools to, to look at that whole plan and do it as a, put this as part of the discussion in the full plan to see what might be the best route there. One of them would be exactly that with the, with the signs, and they'll have the other areas, I think they actually have a school zone and different things about incorporating that in, but seeing, seeing as it a full plan and see how it all incorporates into the Franklin School is really what I, on this being specific, right there with the school, I think this is a good time to tie in that safe, and I hope I'm saying it right, the safe routes, the school program and such, and see, part of it's the crossing of the kids across there, going to school, and I think it just all ties in. I don't know if there's been any follow-ups since the last couple requests I made about that with the schools, to get them down like we've done with Lincoln and such, to see.
I think what we said was it has to come from them. But there, doesn't it initiate? Doesn't it start with the school?
I think, but I'm wondering, does that mean we have, we could still make contact with them and maybe bring out a discussion with them to?
We can certainly do that.
Yeah. But I think you're right, you mean for the grants and such?
Yeah. It's also not very easy in a town our size to get two of those. It would be, since we got Lincoln, it would be difficult probably to get another one.
Well, maybe we find if it's, if we don't get approved for that, is there other measures that they might like? You know, that would be connected, because it is, it does go right up to their property of the school.
Right. Maybe reach out to the school and, and maybe, I think maybe I'll make a motion to continue to solicit feedback from the school and others, whether to create a four-way stop at Carmel and Stimson Street intersection. Does that make sense?
If I was, if I, if I may, and I apologize for jumping in, but perhaps if you're going to mention four-way stop, also mention, or other?
Or other signs.
Traffic safety improvements to the, to the general area.
Good.
All right, that's a good motion. Is there any support for that?
Support.
Okay. There's a motion and support. And any further discussion? Hearing none. Carrie, can you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thanks for speaking again, Mrs. Burn. And Marcus, if you could have staff get the guts of the letters that were sent out and just get them to us and the general address of...
Did you receive any directly that you have?
I received one from an Everett Street resident, a few houses from the corner of Carmel and Everett.
If you could just pop that over to Bruce, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And did Bruce sign up me to cut you off? Did you want to say anything tonight or want to hold off?
Other than the update, we did get 24 responses, 22 of them negative.
Okay. All right.
And for your information too, oh, two months ago, we put up school zone signs there up in that neighborhood. Of course, a lot of people don't notice them.
Thank you.
I think I'm doing too bad.
Okay, well, thanks for that. We'll keep receiving input on that. Next up, and they've been very patient tonight, Fred and Kathy are here, it looks like. See how I'm doing with my names now. And we have an adoption of a resolution with Michigan Rubber Products. Who would like to handle that? Mr. Pacha?
I'll just introduce it quickly and then we can turn into our guests. This item is before you this evening. We are asking that we set a public hearing for October 7th, 2013, to consider the request from Michigan Rubber for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $501,113. So adding another half a million plus on top of, on top of all of the local investment, reinvestment that's been happening over this past year is just truly amazing. This will help retain six positions, is FYI. So, okay.
May I, councilmembers?
Hello. Hi. We're, my name's Freddie Burgess. I'm Director of Operations for North America, representing Michigan Rubber here tonight. It's one of our star programs to reinvest back in the USA and keep and maintain jobs here. We are a Chinese-owned company, but one of our biggest deals is maintaining jobs in the USA. Michigan Rubber has been, over the past few years, has sold many times. And now that it's Chinese-owned, you would think we'd just be moving it. Well, we're not. We're reinvesting back into the company. And one of these, one of our first is to put these four pieces of equipment in and start the revitalization program. You're welcome to attend or come by the plant. We've done a lot of 5S, cleaning that facility up, making our employees proud of that facility. So this is just the beginning of the reinvestment of Michigan Rubber into this Cadillac area. So if you've got questions about this, we're...
All right.
Our great CFO, Kathy Fulew, is here also.
Yep. We got to talk with both of you last week at, or see you at the KAMA meeting, as well as we got a nice tour from Bruce Schaefer of Rex Air. Speaking of tours, he's quite a guy, isn't he?
He is. He's almost as boisterous as I am.
I don't know.
I don't know about that.
He's hard to beat within that area.
How many employees do you have now?
There's 100 and...
250-some employees right now.
250, okay.
So... This is, this has really been the summer. We've been talking about that a lot this summer, about never having this, this short of a timeframe, the, the new developments and people investing back in has just been amazing, which is really nice.
I think, Councilman, one of the things we've seen though is a lack of investment for so many years that now it's come to the point that's either you have to do it or you get out of the business. So there is some, you know, weighing of opinions to, to jump back in and do manufacturing. And one of them is that we're going to have to revitalize ourselves with trained associates here in this town, so, and you have a pretty good program over there. With the Senator coming in, wanting to do some of the training with the colleges now. You know, it's, it's going to be an adventure, to say the least. And some of ours is just getting this new equipment back into place that where it's been sorely needed for so many years. So with your support, maybe we can get, this will be just the beginning of a, of a saving of a company.
By the way, thanks for your patience. The good news is, I've been saying a lot this summer, is that at least the next time you come, you're at the beginning of the agenda. It's one of the...
We check your perseverance first.
That I have.
Thank you, Freddie, for coming tonight. This and the next one's another million, almost, making it 10. And we've, I've heard we have another three coming shortly. So this is really good news to hear that industry wants to stay in Cadillac and is reinvesting. And the job, the jobs that you have insured us are very important to our community, so thank you. Kathy, thank you too. Did you want to say anything tonight?
No, I just, the Chinese are committed to staying here and growing the business here. We made the decision to pick Michigan Rubber.
Wonderful.
Lucky they picked us.
Thank you. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2013-3018 and set a public hearing for October 7th, 2013, to consider request for Michigan Rubber Products for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate, excuse me, in the amount of $501,113.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Carrie, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you very much again for coming and we'll see you maybe at the public hearing. You don't have to come, but we'd like to have you here if you could. All right, Freddie. Thanks, Kathy. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Another IFT request is before us this evening. This one is from Metal Punch in the amount of $308,238.90. We are looking for the setting of a public hearing again for October 7th, 2013. I'm not sure, sir, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but...
Oscar Peppers, Metal Punch Corporation.
If you could give councilors a quick update as to what you're doing, that'd be great.
What it is, is the replacement for a machine tool that we've had in our building that has used up its lifespan, and this is a replacement for them to keep our jobs, keep our employees working, and to maintain the quality of product that we do produce.
All right. Well, thanks for reinvesting again.
Thank you. Metal Punch has been in this cut, cut town for 40 years, and we hope and plan to stay here for as long as we can beyond that. So, thank you very much.
Oscar has, how long you been on your new position?
July 1.
Since July 1, okay. Because I know Oscar has replaced a very, very good man, and he's retiring. And I have many, many talks with you guys over there, and they're active members of KAMA. We still want to tour someday, but we know that it's kind of difficult to do at times.
A little bit.
I know. But, yeah, Metal Punch has really come a long way. So it's got, in 2009, it diversified into many different product areas. Maybe you mentioned some of the different things you're in now?
We, we build tooling for the, for dyes automotive. We also do tooling for powdered metal industries. We also do die sharpenings for like heating and cooling. We are diversified to where we do hit like eight or nine different industries in the United States, so.
Medical industry, I believe you're in.
We're touching in the medical industry a little bit also. So we've managed to come up with a couple new customers in the last couple of years. In fact, if you open a soda can, a little pop-top on there, slowly manufacturing makes the machines to do that, in I think 21 or two countries in the world, they build all of the dyes for that, and now we're a tool supplier for them also. So, really looking up.
Great. Oscar, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
For having with us. Okay. How's council on to proceed here?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2013-3019 and set a public hearing for October 7th to consider the request from Metal Punch Corporation for the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $308,238.90.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
There is support. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Carrie, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bullman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good luck, Oscar. Thanks again for coming. Sorry you had to wait so long. No reports of boards and commissions. We do have a couple of minutes of boards and commissions, one from the Cadillac Arts Council, from a meeting held July 22nd, 2013. Also, the minutes of the Historical District Commission meeting July 8th of 2013. Anything of those reports, Mr. Petcher, that are noteworthy for tonight or for the public?
I just wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, that in the Arts Council minutes, it actually refers to the letter that was provided through an email to Council regarding a request for a funding increase, that I believe I had, when I provided it to Council, mentioned that that'd be something we could talk about as part of our future budgeting discussions and plans for the next fiscal year.
I would also like to comment on that. My wife, according to the minutes, made that recommendation, and she tried to correct it at the last meeting, but Jim, or Mr. Smith, or Jim Smith, wasn't there, so she's going to make that correction, because that motion, she did not make it in quite that manner. And I've lived with my wife for forty-two years, and I certainly would want to state that, so I don't have a problem on home front, okay?
So you can go home, so you get to go home tonight.
But she will correct that, because that wasn't the motion that she, she had made, so...
That's on the front page there?
Yes, but I want to correct that, so that I have a warm bed tonight.
Okay. I don't know that you're going to be able to correct it, but you have pointed it out, and hopefully the Arts Council will take a look at that when Mr. Smith appears back at the next meeting.
I, if I, if I may, I, just on the other side of minutes, I wanted to mention that there's a website for the marketing of the Cobb's Mitchell Building. It's a new website that is C-O-B-B-S-M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L dot com. There's a new marketing plan, I think, in place. I believe there's also a new company that's representing the, the property, and information can be obtained through, through that website, which is basically cobsmitchell.com, so...
Anything else on those, Mr. Petcher?
Nope.
Next up is public comments, then. It is requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. Hearing and seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and tabled items are, there are none tonight. Next up would be good of the order. Mr. Petcher, I'll start with you and come back after we go through Council. I see Sherri's not here tonight, and I think she had a conference or something this week for work.
Yes. Were you starting with me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would. That's alright.
It's alright. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Just a couple of brief comments this evening. I wanted to thank all the members of staff involved with the Child Safety Expo that was held last Saturday. I went out there with my children, and it was a nice opportunity for them to meet and greet members from our fire department, as well as members from area fire departments throughout the county, the police department, the sheriff's department. Good to see the smokehouse, it really is a nice, a nice tribute that the city and these other agencies put on, and I think, I think it was well attended. I know that attendance was kind of ebbing and flowing, I think, throughout the, throughout the several hours that it was, it was available to the public, but it was, it was a good opportunity, and I'm very appreciative of all the work that goes into it. Secondly, I wanted to mention, and frankly, it's more or less even, I don't know if it's a mention or really an apology, but at our last council meeting, we did have a FOIA, FOIA appeal hearing, and it was brought to my attention that perhaps some of my remarks were, were short and snippy, and I, without any question, absolutely apologize to members of this council, to Mrs. Knitz, or Son, anybody that may have been offended by, by the way that I was making remarks back to the, the appellant. Certainly was not at all my intention of sounding offensive in any shape or form, so I do apologize.
Thank you. And did, were you able to maybe just complete the steps there on that file, and just so that there is a paper trail? There was a question about that.
There was a question about a letter from, from 2010. I actually have it sketched out, but I have not yet printed it and signed it and put it in, but I will be doing that.
Great. Thanks a lot. I appreciate you filling that gap. Anything else, Mr. Petcher, for the good of the order?
At this point, I think you're going to come back around, so...
Yeah, the bear's won, or do you want to talk about that?
After we adjourn.
Okay. Councilmember Shippers, you're in a new position, so you get to go next.
Wow. See, there are benefits from this. I keep telling myself that. First of all, what, I have a few things. I love all the art stuff that's going on. On Saturday, October 5th, Gopher Wood Concerts is kicking off its thirtieth season with a wonderful show at the Elks. It's open to the public. It's with locals, Rachel Davis and her husband, Dominic John Davis. Zach Bunce is going to be performing as well. And this year, for the first time, Gopher Wood is partnering with the After 26 Project, so you can do dinner and the show, and they'll provide dinner at After 26, and then you can just walk across the parking lot to the show at the Elks. And it's for dinner and the show, it's very reasonable at, at $20 for both. So I'm really excited about that happening. Oh, and this first concert is one that Gopher Wood bid on at the Rotary Auction and got it, so it helps the community. This was a show donated by the artists to support our community, so that's a good one to come to. I like the idea of the City Sculpture Project. This is something that I've seen in various other places. They mentioned Chelsea and Novi that do the, the visiting sculptures. There are other communities that have sculptures throughout their community that really draw people, and Marquette has some summertime art events that draw a lot of people, and with more and more people visiting our community in the summer season, it would be nice to have us be a center for art as well. And with that in mind, too, Art Prize is just starting up. We have two local artists with submissions to Art Prize, so if you are a Cadillac resident and have an opportunity to go visit in Grand Rapids for their Art Prize, and that draws hundreds of thousands of people, so art events do draw people, be sure to go visit our Cadillac residents. It's, I know Scott Buckmaster, I can't think, I know, I can picture him, do you remember the name of, he's from Nepal, married to Aaron O'Neil, oh my gosh, I'm really sorry, I know his name. I don't know his name. So support the arts here and afar.
Thank you, Councilmember Shippers. And I saw that was promoted at the After 26 Depot and Restaurant, and so that's a nice, a nice package, so congratulations on your thirtieth season with Gopher Wood. Sorry about that. Councilmember Stevens, I was giving you a second to gather your thoughts. Any good of the order or bad of the order tonight?
Couple of quick things. First one is to thank Councilmember Melama, and then I know the staff as well, the, I got, I attended this last week, the Issues and Solutions over coffee, and I know that Mr. Dietlin was there, and Mr. Petcher. In the other months, I know other members of staff have come. It's a great thing. This one, it, yeah, I wouldn't deny it was a spirited debate, but at the end, most of them were thanking us for the time that we spent in the discussion, and that excellent thing, I know you've been doing this, I, I appreciate you doing it, because it gives some people an opportunity, and a more informal thing that's not televised, where they're feeling nervous to come in front of the whole council. It also is, having the staff there has been really nice to be able to answer questions. But I also like how you've been spreading it around and going to different locations through town, and that, that's appreciated as well. So I wanted to just recognize you for your efforts there. Secondly, and I know Marcus mentioned it, but the Child Safety Expo, our staff, especially our firemen and policemen for what they put together, and all the volunteers, and Sarah Benson, the emergency coordinator for the county, she does an amazing job with that, and a nice event, again. It's a good time to show our staff, you know, to the public, and the, the relationship there. And we got to see Sage in action for the first time, the police dog at an event like that, and as you can expect, was a big success, so... Again, Marcus, if you can pass on, and then I also wanted to welcome our clerk, and we didn't get a chance to meet your family there, but to welcome all of you to Team Cadillac as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Melama, in your new seat over here, has that changed things for you?
What Councilmember Stevens was mentioning, I got a excellent, a nice letter from Jack Dillon, and, you know, spirited, and he, he makes a statement, I think the thoughts and the comments were well received, and your response was certainly appreciated, and his last statement, excuse me, we need more of this communications between city representatives and the public. And I did this two years ago, I, I brought this, because it bothered me when statements were made, and they were, they were opinions, and they weren't based on issues, and they weren't based on facts. And, you know, people have issues, sometimes they're informed, sometimes they're not informed, but everybody should have the opportunity to be able to share their concerns in a professional and business manner. And, and I felt that, and it's been very, very successful. I'm very pleased with it. Some people say, well, those comments are made because they're political comments. We don't have to be like Washington. We don't have to be like Lansing. You know, we, we can solve our problems, but we have to sit down and talk and respect each other, and bring facts forward. Opinions are important. Everyone has opinions, but they need to be founded in facts, and I think that's one thing that this has done. And a couple of the concerns that came up were concerns about the public, the personal property tax, and how that affects the city. Our city manager did an excellent job of explaining that. Questions on the roads, what can we do to repair those? Questions on the sidewalks, and the concern about the paver. In fact, the, the staff, I didn't have an answer. We didn't have quite an answer at that time. We knew certain things were going on, but the staff gave me an excellent readout, you know, the, in front of the Cadillac Family Pharmacy, that's completed, in front of the Old City Hall, Visitors Bureau, that's completed, in front of Herman's Restaurant, and that's where we were with our last meeting, that's in progress. In front of the Elks, that's not started yet, but it will be. In front of the Theater, that's not started yet, but will be, and in front of the Academy of Beauty. So there are answers out there. We just have to sit down, and we got to communicate with one another and solve our problems. But I thought it was very successful, and I want to thank Jack Dillon for sharing his, his comments with me. We had an excellent KAMA meeting. We had the President of MMA up here, talking about personal property tax, made sure that the county was there, we made sure that the Superintendent of Cadillac Public Schools was there, the mayor invited. Joey? Joe, excuse me. And we had several other people that, that it affects, and we had a very, very good discussion on what we can do, and of course, MMA is faced with the same challenges our city is, and that's Lansing and politics, and trying to get over that hurdle. But we had an excellent discussion. And our surveys are done. Thank you, Mr. Adams, on the Innovation Center. We had thirty-nine companies that responded, and that's excellent. And we should have those results, I would think, by the first of October. Am I correct, Mr. Adams? And I think that pretty much does it.
Thank you, Councilmember Melama. Just want to thank you for your work on KAMA, Doug as well. We did have a nice meeting with Joe Spry, Leslie Hausler from the county, Marcus Owen and Jerry, I think we're all there, and myself, and we got to hear a lot of the updates that would affect manufacturing, as well as municipalities, with regard to the personal property tax. Thanks for doing the issues over coffee and facts over coffee, Doug, and continuing to get out there with our staff. Doug is retired and has a little more time during the day. Keeps him busy, and...
Yeah, we need to get him a job.
He's got more things to do probably now than he did when he worked, but thanks for doing that. The Safety Expo was wonderful. I went through there and got by without the dog getting too upset. He was a beautiful young puppy still. He looks really in great shape, and Lance is doing a great job, and all of the agencies that are there did very well, and it's just another nice project, especially for the families, the children, that really seem to enjoy it. I also attended earlier that morning the Suicide Awareness Walk, and continued to learn a lot about the struggles people have, and the necessity that we all keep an eye on one another and treat each other nicely. We had a nice neighborhood discussion tonight, and some folks came down, they responded. I appreciate staff continuing to look, take a hard look at neighborhoods. We did this earlier with our sidewalk plowing, and we've invested to improve that program. And we've had Safe Routes to School going on all over the, all over the city, at least in the Lincoln School area, and there's been some nice changes at the, in the Franklin School area with our, our sidewalks. So I want to commend our staff for the work they've done so far in opening themselves up to compliments, or criticisms, or ideas, and I think there were a lot of ideas from just the brief discussion I had with Bruce last Thursday morning or so, as to how the survey was going, which, which it was going well. Nick Gomez is in the house tonight. He did the, he's behind the camera. I think he's from Matton, which I like to call Manhattan. Is that right, Nick, or?
I actually grew up in Cadillac.
Okay.
I graduated from Manhattan in 10th grade.
Alright. Alright, you graduated in 10th grade?
Well, I went to Manhattan in 10th grade and graduated from Manhattan. But I'm a long-time resident of Cadillac.
Alright. He steps up for ninety-seven and ninety-eight, Jed Raybald's here as well, but Nick did the impromptu filming of Mr. Petcher and Ms. Green and Jeff Dietlin on Friday afternoon.
I've not seen it yet, by the way.
Yeah? So thanks, Nick, for joining the team. He's been doing a lot, he's done a lot of impressive events in our community, and got them on public TV for everyone to see, so I'd like, just like to welcome him tonight.
Thank you.
I think that does it, and I will flop it over to Mr. Petcher, if that's okay?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, at this time, it would be appropriate to consider adjourned to closed session for the discussion of a legal opinion with the city attorney. There's no staff to invite this evening.
Alright, is that singular or plural, as to opinion?
It's actually singular.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. As stated...
Okay. There's a motion to go into closed session?
Support.
For those stated reasons, there's support. Could we have a roll call? Carrie?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bullman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations, Sandy, by the way. Good, good luck to you guys. Thanks for coming in tonight. Here we are, back in the council room, and out of closed session. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we leave the closed session portion of the meeting and go back into open session.
Thank you.
Support.
There's a motion and support. Actually, do we have a roll call, Mr. Petcher?
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Spelman?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett? Yes. Motion carried. We're back in open session. Anything to be part of the closed session legal opinion that we reviewed?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council.
Okay. Anything else from the council tonight? Hearing and seeing nothing else, so we will adjourn tonight to meeting. Meeting adjourned.